So we do, I'm gonna start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So our first item is an update on Angelitas energy. Who did we update?
I can give you the update. So the issue is when Jill went looking for a building permit. I was curious about the decommissioning bond, assuming that maybe they were not working there anymore. So I think I asked about that and then Jill discovered that there does not seem to be a building permit filed. And Dawn doesn't have a decommissioning bond. So those should have been done in 2019, right? Is that when that was approved? Yeah, so they're working without a building permit.
And the decommissioning bond is in the, is it in that decision too?
Yes, they were supposed to pay that when they came in to file the, or apply for the building permit.
Wish they'd never done it.
No.
So the building inspector should be just shutting them down then? Not that they're doing anything because it's all overgrown, it's like a jungle there now.
Oh, is it really?
Oh yeah, there's nothing done in there. They pulled every piece of equipment out of there, that one trailer that they still had there, that's gone too. They pulled that out.
Everything's gone.
Two of them, everything's gone. The only thing that's there is a fence.
Which is no worse.
Well, not yet.
Yeah, I don't know what the disposition is gonna be.
There's nothing in, what I'm hearing through the rumor mill is that they don't have the money to proceed.
So they still have not responded to an email from Joyce. They did pay, right, they did pay their peer review fee.
So we'll keep on having the peer reviewer go?
So I told them to do once a month. Just so we don't, if we're not gonna get paid, and I told them flat out that we may not get money, so.
Well, the good thing about having them go is every time he goes, he documents saying that there's been no forward progress, there's been nothing done. And that's gonna give us the evidence because hey, we got a third party that's doing this, documenting that they're not moving forward, so.
But that's true, but then that's gonna cost money and if they don't pay us.
Well, but if they're still paying it, you know, if they stop paying it.
Right now, we're okay, right?
She said no.
What?
She said no, they're not paying.
Well, we had the last payment and Rich, because I couldn't get on the computer, you had the amounts that I said we had left. But I'm not getting any response since I have that check, so getting another payment is, I doubt will happen. We're okay right now, but if you keep it up, we're gonna run out of money.
Well, and we're also gonna have them do once a month, I mean, they were doing like every two weeks, so it'll cut and half.
Now Jill, are you sending them messages and documenting that you're, you're trying to get with them? Because at some point.
It's all money mail.
At some point, we're gonna have to send you this.
And he's always responded. And just these, just last week was the first time he had it, and that check still came that I had asked for in addition. So we're, we're good, we're good to pay, um, do you have that email, Rich, that I sent you with the amounts?
Uh, no, I don't.
Alright, cause I can look it up later, but I don't have access right now because I had to leave quick today.
So when's the last time you got a check from them?
So I think the Tuesday or Wednesday after our last meeting, so two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
And I know we have, um.
So we have plenty to pay these two invoices.
Yeah, we have that and then a little bit more, so maybe, maybe June, maybe July. But we'll know beforehand, like, we'll know the exact amount that we can let, tell them this is what we have if you can do it for this amount.
So have you, you've gotten no responses to your last couple emails?
Correct.
And Joyce, they haven't responded to Joyce?
She's, she emailed two of them, Tom and Chris maybe, just to say, hey, what's the status?
But when was that, how long?
Probably a week and a half ago.
And that's unusual, right?
They would have replied right away, or you know, within a couple days.
Should we send a registered letter to someone saying, what's the status?
Well, let's confirm about the permit.
That's true.
Yeah, I think we need to track down the building permit and decommissioning bond because if they failed to do either one of them.
All bets are off.
You know, because again, why would we allow them to proceed if there's no decommissioning bond out there? And I know BJ is not gonna do anything until she gets a building permit. And I don't think Scott Mansfield has done anything for the electrical department at all.
So is there an electrical permit, Jill?
I, yeah, I can look that up. I haven't, I was looking for the building permit, there's no building permit. There's definitely not a building permit, I looked back years too.
I'm just curious if there's nothing, is there no building permit, is there no electrical permit, is there no decommissioning bond, is there nothing?
Apparently there, that's probably true.
And in order to get a building permit, that's when we would have to get the bond in order to issue the building permit, so it makes sense. There's no building permit, then there's no decommissioning bond.
Do they need the building permit for basins though?
Don't think so, I don't know.
I think the only time they need the building permit is once they stop putting the racks in and everything else.
Yeah, that's what Joyce said too, clearing trees, you don't need it, I don't know about the basins though. Cause the basins are part of the site plan?
That, that would be something to talk with BJ about, if you need clarification, if the basins trigger a building permit? Or she's waiting for construction?
It should because it changes the topography, so as long as you're moving earth.
Yeah, but.
It triggers the DEP and everything.
And it is like construction, I mean, unlike removing trees, right, which is you're just removing, this is actually digging down, adding material, adding like drainage structures. Even the fence, I mean.
Yeah, even the fence.
Almost consider that part of the.
Well, the fence, they should have gotten a permit for the fence too.
Oh really?
Because the fence is over six feet tall.
Seven feet now, but.
It's an eight foot set fence, eight to ten.
So that's definitely, yeah, they should have had one.
So should have had a permit for their fence.
Would that go through BJ too, or is that?
Yep, right?
Fence is definitely built in.
Which site is this?
This is the one by my house.
The one on the, up on the hill or down the hill?
Well, both of them.
Both of them, yeah.
Oh, four of them.
It's the one we want.
So there's four sites all, two in Westbrook Field, two in Warren, and three and four, I don't know which, which one is next to David? And then the other ones across the street.
It's, um, what is it, Coye Hill, Wet Warren, or Beaman Road, Solar, Warren.
Have they done anything at the Westbrook Field sites?
Nothing.
Nothing.
There's nothing done, so.
Sounds like they bought.
And the riprap is actually getting pulled down with debris coming down from one of the hills. They built up the hill for the basin and it actually has pushed the riprap down and it just goes past it now. But it's going down the hill, it's not going into wetlands or anything like that, the riprap going along the side.
Which side, your side or across the street?
That was in the Westbrook Field.
Oh, in Westbrook Field.
Yeah, that's all Westbrook Field side. With our side, there's absolutely nothing going on. But the Westbrook Field side, because they started much more before, oh, the other thing I don't think they did, they never hydro seeded. They never hydro seeded the Warren side.
Oh, so whatever grows is like a bunch of crap.
Because all, all the, all the Westbrook Field side was hydro seeded with like a clover mix. And that, that's probably about four feet tall now, so. Well, on the Warren side, it's still all just rock and.
Oh, nothing's around.
Scrub grass, no, because they never put, they never sprayed anything. So it's all, and I believe in our conditions, they have so much time to seed it. Because if they don't, all that starts washing down the hill. Because it's loose material, yeah.
Do you think it's worth me visiting you and your house and doing a flyover from your house and take a panoramic view of what's going on there?
I would think so.
It'd be interesting to see what's going on with the fact that they didn't seed anything on our side. And they kind of pushed, they kind of pushed off that subject when I asked about that too. I'm like, when are you guys gonna hydro seed? Oh, we're getting to, we're getting to, we're gonna have guys come out. But they never did. After that, after that last meeting is like when they really just, nothing was happening.
They did do a little bit of repair work on that one basin where it flushed around the pipe, but that was.
But that was it, that was all they did.
I wonder how bad it is now.
I don't know, it could be, yeah, if they didn't fix that right or, yeah.
So if they don't have a building permit, they never applied for one, if you're gonna, how do you verify that, or are you going to?
Well, she can't find one.
Can you say that again, my speaker went to a new speaker.
No, have you verified that they do not have an application for building permit?
Yes.
Yeah, so they don't, at all.
I would definitely ask BJ what triggers the building permit, at what stage? If it's the basins, and they can put these basins in, and they never had a permit? Or is it with the racks and all the other stuff?
When is BJ in this week, Jill, do you know?
I'm not sure, um, I have access to text her, so. Cause I brought the phone, so I have, I have COVID, so I can't go in until, uh.
Yeah, you do have COVID, okay. Well, your, your email said you were negative this morning, but then you took.
Yeah, and then I tested again and I did two separate companies and I'm positive on both. That's why I went in and then I tested later on and, cause I still had the cough and all that, so yeah, I do have it. But if you're, with your permission, I'd like to work from home on Thursday if I can get up and running with the computer and just take these next two days to rest, I do have sick time, so. But I think if I'm, I'm feeling pretty decent today, so I think I'd like to work and try to work on the gravel pit stuff while there's no interruption and no phone calls or any of that, while I'm at home with no children and no anything, so.
Okay, so if, if BJ says a building permit should have been triggered when they started working on the basins, we don't have a building permit, we have no decommissioning bond, would, do we send them a letter and say what?
At that point, we get involved with legal because they're not getting back to us and at some point, you know, what, what do we, you know, do we sit there and say, okay, we consider the site abandoned now?
Are they leasing the property or they bought?
They own that property.
They own it.
So it's gonna be interesting if they're gonna pay their taxes on it too. Because, yeah, they're, they're one, the, the only site that I know of that bought the land, so.
I wish I could buy it and live all the way up to it. Tell your neighbor.
Oh, it's a beautiful view up there too, huh?
Yeah.
Alright, so I guess we wait till next week and touch base with legal and see what happens.
Right.
Well, I'll try and get, I'll try and come in and talk to BJ whenever she's, can, Jill, can you find out when she's available?
Yep.
Okay. Cause I wanna, I'd like to talk to her about that and then ZPT also.
Alright, so now, thanks for the update.
Yeah.
Impressive. Why don't we start with the payroll for Jill?
Alright, I make a motion, we approve payroll to Jill in the amount of $312.78 and $280.70.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Now let's move into the minutes.
We got more, we got more to pay.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the twelve, uh, wow, twelve, the 53122 invoices for O'Reilly, Talcum, Talbot and Oakham Associates in the amount of $2,049.82 for lot three and $1,932.32 for lot four.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
I make a motion, we approve and sign the June invoices for WB Mason in the amount of $200.82, $105.75, and $79.69.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve and sign the May invoices for Merrick O'Connell in the amount of $7,185.8, $2,345, and $70.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Okay, since I'm on a roll, um, I make a motion, we approve and sign the July twenty.
June twenty.
Uh, June 22nd through July 21st, 2022 invoice for Zoom in the amount of $15.93.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve and sign the revised minutes from May 23rd, 2022, and the minutes from June 13th, 2022.
Have a second?
The second is?
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Do you have any comments and concerns?
Plus the meeting's too short.
We're just lacking a public. We have two in Facebook. No?
Nothing.
Nope, do you have anything on the open space stuff?
Nope.
No. No comments and concerns in public either. Other business?
I have other business.
Alright, cool.
So I'd like to take the next four hours and talk about it. No, um, Jill would like to request, um, quiet hours, if you will. Hours where she's in the office, but the door's closed, so she can get stuff done. So she's been trying to work on the permits, the gravel pit permits, and she keeps getting interrupted. So if she, how, what, well, how would you want that structured in terms of time, amount of time?
I'm not sure, but I think if, if I can do that Thursday, work from home with the quiet and see what I can get, I might not even need it. I might be able to get it done, just cause it was also year, year end, so there's all budgets, bunch of all that other stuff and then a lot of interruptions. It's been, it's kind of a quiet time, but it still doesn't stop people coming in and sitting down with all their issues that, and then BJ's there talking to them, so, and, and other people in the office coming in. So I might, without any interruption, be able to get a good chunk done on Thursday and then we can maybe revisit when.
I'll do a motion to allow Jill to work from home on Thursday.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. Rich Aihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
And I'm just gonna make a comment, as a person that runs a business, there is no quiet time unless you are not there. So if you can, if you can slate yourself to work a few hours at home, then you get your quiet time. Until somebody figures out where you live.
Till their kids find you.
As long as you don't get interrupted there, yeah.
Well, she could do that too, right? Maybe two hours a week at home? I mean, I was thinking she'd go to the office, lock the door, and be in there for two hours.
That doesn't work, and then the phone rings and somebody knocks on, Rich, I know you're in there.
Someone's at the door.
I know you're there.
Oh, my gosh, yep.
But maybe you could come in on the.
Plus I share an office too with Corinne sometimes too, so she's in there, people come in from her, so yeah.
Even if you could like go home early or come in a little bit later, that seems to work.
Would you need a full day or would half a day a week do it for you?
I don't know which one I get to dig into this one, cause I haven't, and it shouldn't be too hard or take too long, it's just that.
Yeah, okay.
I haven't had the time and to pull up, you know, so at least at home, I can pull up different gravel, try to see how many, you know, we have, I can pull the files from home, bring them home and just, it's really just a couple letters, I think. And I've done a little bit of it, but it's just every time I have it out, I'm ready.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, if you've got four hours of quiet time a week, would you be able to plow through what you need to plow through?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, like I said, I might not even need it. We'll see how Thursday goes and then on our next meeting, maybe we can, I can update you, then we'll take it from there.
Okay.
So here's a crazy thing. I know I'm thinking out of the box.
Oh, stop that.
I know, it gets me in so much trouble. But what if you, we thought about doing an assistant for Jill? Cause one of the big things that we have, you know, if the assistant comes in a couple hours a week or whatever to help her out, the reason why is because if Jill left, we have nobody that knows the department. You know, because we had that with Kathy where we had that transition and she spent a lot of time with Jill, teaching her and getting her, getting her going. If Jill, if we lost her, okay, for whatever reason, God forbid anything ever happened or whatever. But if something happened and we lost Jill, we have nothing. I don't know how to run that office and none of us, I don't think any of us know how to run that office. And there's a lot of stuff in there, timelines, filing, all kinds of stuff going on in there. If there's a way we can work it in to get an assistant, couple hours a week, just to help her.
Right, even if that person took phone calls while Jill was doing some of the like.
Done something, done filing, learned it piece by piece, at least we're grooming somebody to learn the job. So if Jill says, you know something, I just got a job with a Fortune 500 company, I'm making 500 grand a year, see you Warren, and we have somebody that can step into our position and at least help.
You have an idea to be with any Fortune 500 companies, are you? Okay.
Not yet.
That's an idea, but as long as that person doesn't keep on coming to her and taking it more of her time than she needs. Like, weren't you gonna put together some sort of little like not training manual, but something.
Procedure.
Procedureal type thing? Have you? Oh, you've gone again.
You sound.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
I did put down a little thing for myself, like how I learned, like, but I think, I don't know, I mean, someone can try to read it, maybe they can understand it, maybe they couldn't. Um, it was just as I was learning everything so fast, I had to write certain things down so I could go over it. But yeah, so it's just a binder, it's not anything crazy, but it was just something for me to look back on if I got stumped or.
So I think it's great.
It would take a good amount of time to make an accurate training manual for someone to come in.
Because now we're.
And it's not one job, it's two.
Well, now that we're talking about getting that software for the building department, because that's gonna take a lot too. Because there's gonna be a lot of manual entry into the software to get going. And that's not something that Jill could take a lot of time sitting there doing while she's doing her regular job and then doing, you know, that other stuff.
Right, understandable, but again, as long as that person doesn't chew up an extra couple hours of her time a week going, what do I do with this, what do I do with this, what do I do with this?
We, we don't want any chatty patty's in the office.
Well, but I mean, if they're legitimate questions and they're trying to learn, that could take away more of your time. What do you think, Jill, how would you want something like this to work? What would be most beneficial for you?
I have a lot to say on that, but not right now, I have to sit and think on it and maybe have a executive session or something so we can talk about it.
Well, we, we can't do it for that.
No.
We just have to talk about it, or you can talk to Derek or talk to one of us, or two of us actually.
Okay.
We just can't do it in a quorum. Cause we'd have to post it as a meeting, but individually.
However you, yeah, however you feel, I don't know, but.
Okay, alright.
Conversation for another day.
So we'd have to create a position at a town meeting, right? Okay, and fund it and whatever, okay. Well, so it's, it's a possibility, Jill.
Which it could be funded through revenue in the building department. Because really the building department generates revenue for the town. Through permitting and stuff like that.
As long as we get the permit.
Yeah, as long as they issue permits.
That was a big permit, if, if indeed they needed to get one at this point, that's a lot of money to lose, right? I mean, you're talking tens of thousands of dollars, right, for the, for two big lots like that?
To lose?
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't the building permits have been a lot of money?
We looked at some of the other solar and they were about 27,000-ish, 30,000, another one, another was like.
There's your part-time person.
Get out for me.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let's get this to legal.
I mean, in the, in their, well, no, they bought it, right, they bought the land, they're not leasing it. Yeah, no, it's illegal.
But the thing about is, if they don't pay, we can put a lien on the property too.
Yeah, I think that's.
Because their owners of the property.
Yep, that would be a definite one to do, yeah.
But if they have no building permit, well, they would have needed one probably for the basins.
I think so, it makes, seems, it seems like construction.
But if they didn't, for whatever reason, and they don't have one and it's just open land, they pay the taxes on it, doesn't matter.
And so they should have been paying taxes, right?
I wonder if they have been.
They should be, yes.
There's no pilot.
Well, the thing about is, we haven't seen a, um, a tax report in a few months now. Have you seen one?
No.
So we're gonna have to get with, get with them about making sure we get a tax title report to see. Because that's something we used to get all the time, we could scan down, because when people came in for permits, we could look it down, their name, and say, oh, your name's A, you gotta pay your, go pay your fees before we approve anything for you.
Well, that's one thing, Jill, can you just check to see if they've paid any taxes on that property?
Already wrote it down?
And they definitely shouldn't be in chapter 61A anymore either.
No.
No, 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 they shouldn't.
Because they removed all the trees.
Yeah, yeah.
No more agricultural there.
No.
So the land could just sit there unused if they pay their taxes?
Yep. Back to nature.
So it's truly not abandoned because they didn't go?
I know, it's hard to say if it's abandoned or not.
But that, that was a legal question, you know?
Well, I think the abandoned part goes in the fact that they have a permit or special permit from us. And at some point, with no activity, that special point permit cancels.
Two years, plus there's the COVID tolling of 462 days, so.
But this has been going on since 2019.
Yeah, I think we calculated that, Jill, and I don't remember what it is.
I think that was for, for the other one though. For the other project, it wasn't, Agilis. It was for the, uh, another special permit, I don't know if I'm allowed to say the name without it being on the agenda.
It was, um, wasn't it September for Agilis?
It was December, but it wasn't this one, it was another one we had talked about with the town administrator.
So the permit could have expired already? So the permit could have expired already?
Yeah, I don't know, it depends when it was taken out, and then the, with the COVID tolling.
Because they're still doing, they were still doing work, and we were getting peer reviews, I don't know, is that, they were still paying. Were there peer reviews, so I don't know if that.
Yeah, but they haven't made substantial progress at this point, so.
In, in how long? Couple months at least, right?
Yeah, but I mean, that was, that's what you would look for with the permit.
Right.
I mean, at this point, they should be banging those panels out. Right? I mean, it would have started in May or June.
If anything, they should at least hydro seed it.
Yeah.
They didn't do, they didn't do the hydro seed. You know, it's all rock and, um, the sand mix. You know, the, the till that you get from turning over all the ground, they don't even have any topsoil out there.
Right, right.
So check and see what date the, uh, special permit was approved.
That was other business?
Yes.
Other business.
No more other business?
I don't think so.
Next regular meeting, June, July eleventh.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
No, you gotta second it.
Second. Drew King, aye.
Ed Longigan, aye.
Get away from him.
I know.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Drew King, aye.
Ed Longigan, aye.
David Dufray, aye?
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Alright.
And Rich, Rich, you have all the papers to sign.